Think in the agenda of the proof of the minutes from the last meeting.
I didn't see the minutes as part of the packet.
They came in.
As a supplemental.
Yeah. I didn't either.
I can, I have a copy here if you want.
And all I do, all I got was the agenda. I didn't.
I read them.
Oh, you did.
I read them when you would be amended agenda. They were part of that and I read them. I didn't see them. Didn't understand what I think.
We accept the.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Chris to prove the minutes as written, you know, all those in paper. Next is to hear presentation from EcoMain. Recycling. This is Nate on here and he's gonna talk to you for a few minutes for me coming.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank Justin and the, I'm in the town council for letting me speak here today. I am going to share my screen. Oh, it says disabled participant screen sharing.
Let me see if I can figure out how to give it to you. Once we're in the meeting.
I think you would have to make him, can you make him a co-host? It will give him that. Sometimes it says make.
And co-host.
Now, you should be able to do that.
Excellent. Okay.
Can you state your name, please?
Uh, yes. My name is Nate Cronauer. And just real quick, is everybody able to see my, see my screen here?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. I'm the acting communications manager for EcoMain. And I just have a quick kind of a presentation, just to sort of outline, you know, how EcoMain approaches recycling. You know, what are the processes and how we get our recyclables to market? And then just some other info. And then we'll have some time at the end to, to answer any questions from everyone. So we usually start with just, you know, we like to include our mission statement. You know, this kind of encapsulates what EcoMain is trying to do with all of our operations. And real quick, it's EcoMain provides comprehensive, long-term solid waste solutions in a safe, environmentally responsible, economically sound manner. And is a leader in raising public awareness of sustainable waste management strategies. And we'll kind of touch upon those points as we go through. And I also like to just include a map of all of our different communities. We have about seventy-three municipalities that send us trash recycling or both. And we have Monmouth right up here. I'm specified on that map. I mean, to tie into the sustainability piece, this is where our mission statement kind of is derived from, which is the main state solid waste hierarchy. This is kind of our, our framework for how we approach sustainably managing waste. I know we, we all probably know reduce, reuse, recycle, but it goes a little bit further with compost digestion, waste to energy and landfill. EcoMain, we, we actually touch upon a number of these wrongs in the hierarchy. You know, specifically recycle, we do food waste collection with Agrecycle and then waste to energy. But really, we want to start at the top with reduce and sort of focus on those as we go down. So we'll start with reduction in our, in our practices and, and kind of go from there. But we're talking about recycling today. And I just kind of wanted to show, you know, a lot of the materials that we recycle. Because, you know, there are markets for these materials. All of this, all of the stuff that we collect is, you know, mostly packaging. And that packaging is, you know, usually made from these materials that have markets and are recyclable. This is actually an infographic from twenty-twenty-two. So it kind of is relatively the same with the percentages of the volume of materials. So, you know, most of what we deal with is paper and cardboard. But also, you know, the tonnage for, for metal and glass and plastic is significant as well. But, you know, most of what we're doing is, is the paper. And really, I like to include some, some visuals. When we sell our, our materials to the mills that, you know, de-manufacture and break that material down again. It, it is going to new stuff and we'll actually talk about the different mills that we send it to and their kind of, and their locations. But this is, this is one of the most important slides, I think. It's, so how do we approach recycling? You know, EcoMain is a municipally owned nonprofit. So, you know, we're owned by our member municipalities. The goal is to sustainably manage the waste. You know, at the end of the day, it's not about, you know, making a large profit. It's about finding a sustainable solution to what our communities are sending us. And really, the intent is to cover the processing costs of recycling and then return the revenue from that material to the communities that send it, send it to us. Really focusing on offering the services at low cost with maximum social benefit. It really, the social benefit is something that, you know, my department specifically focuses on in the outreach and education. Is one, how do we, you know, make sure that our communities are disposing of things safely and properly? But how can we also influence sustainable practices beyond just waste in, in our communities? You know, going to schools, going to tabling events for different community days. And really just kind of spreading the word that, you know, we can recycle and there is a place for this to end up. I will note that the way that we sell our recyclables is actually a competitive bidding process. Which actually ensures that we're getting, you know, the highest possible price that we can for it. And so based on that bidding process, it'll go to a number of different places. And almost all domestic locations as well. So, you know, in North America. You know, we're happy to give any more in-depth stuff as we go through. I'll have some of that information here. But really, the main thing is recycling markets are cyclical. They go up and down based on supply and demand of goods. We usually see an increase in value of material around the holiday time as producers are making more packaging. And sort of getting ready for those consumer goods that are going to be, you know, given all, given all about. Real, real quick, where does our recycling go? So again, because of that competitive bidding process, it could go to a number of different locations. But really, the key that EcoMain tries to focus on is establishing good relationships with the mills, the de-manufacturing facilities that we're selling them to. That way, we can have, you know, repeat buyers, so we can have a consistent purchasing of this material. And some of these might seem far away, but because of the competing bidding process, it's going that far because they're paying the, the highest value for that material. I will note that glass is actually crushed and used onsite for our landfill facility. We provide it to construction companies to use in development fill. So it's actually getting kind of bumped up to reuse on the hierarchy. So that's actually an alternative for gravel and crushed stones. So we're actually kind of using a waste product instead of a natural product, which definitely has its benefits there. Just some of those mills that we have good relationships with. For the, on the fiber side, there's Kruger in Montreal. There's West Rock in New York. Canusa in Connecticut. And MRA is one in Brunswick, Maine, that we sell a lot of material to as well. But that's, that is growing as well. So Sellmark is, has a couple locations in North America. And they've actually been sort of a new buyer that we've been, we've been selling to. So there are, you know, up and coming buyers of this material as well. So I want to include this, the past three years of, on the single sort recycling tonnage and maybe kind of explain it a little bit of why, why these numbers look the way they do. We're kind of looking at, you know, post-COVID times. So at, you know, FY twenty-one, we were seeing still, you know, a lot of COVID. People are still kind of staying at home. People are buying a lot more goods because they're not spending that time working. So, you know, there was definitely an increase in consumer purchases. And also because of that stimulus checks were being given out. So people now have more income to, to buy the things that they want. So we actually saw a huge influx in volume in FY twenty-two. That's sort of capping down now because it is a supply and demand. So when, you know, there's a lot of supply, the demand goes down. And so we're just kind of on, in the tail end of that. But these, these markets do go up and down frequently. So that, you know, FY twenty-two was a good year. FY twenty-three is also a good year. It's just maybe not as lucrative as that because of those factors, economic trends. You know, conflicts in other countries, all of these things, fossil fuel prices, all sort of dictate the value that these materials will be sold for. I also included the revenue share from Monmouth. As we can see, you know, FY twenty-one, when it's low, it's, it's maybe not as high. But again, we're looking at FY twenty-two and that was a big year. FY twenty-three, things were sort of settling down. In, in some instances, if we're, don't have the, the best value for something, we might wait and hold on to that volume. Until we can get a more favorable price. So, you know, in certain situations, paper might go down. And it might be a little more costly to recycle, but being a sustainable company that we're trying to make sure that this material is reused. And not just, you know, gone to, you know, the landfill or, you know, waste energy. We get some energy. But we want to recycle that material first until it's not usable anymore. So I just kind of wanted to give that sort of layout of the, the past three years for the tonnage there. And then, and show you those revenues. This is kind of a lot of information, but I wanted to, the town council to have this. Again, you know, we're thinking about sustainability. I always say, we, you know, what's the cost of clean water? What's the cost of clean air? When we're sort of still consuming in the same ways, but we're not reclaiming that material, we're not trying to get, you know, the most out of it before it ends in that end of life. And we're avoiding that circular economy. We actually will see a huge, you know, increase in emissions and a loss to these, these sort of sustainable savings. So again, it's kind of dense there, but I, I encourage you to sort of look through those. That's all from the Institute of Scrap Recycling. So it does a really good job at portraying the environmental benefits to recycling. You know, we hear all about the plastic recycling and the plastic being a problem. As you saw, I mean, you know, only a percentage of our recycling is plastic and a lot of that plastic that is acceptable here is, is getting sent off to be, to be turned into new stuff. So these are just kind of, again, more of those resources. Plastics, again, this is actually the tab that I will focus on for plastics. A lot of people say, oh, you know, there's no place for it. Well, we actually have several mills and buyers that do take it and break it down and reuse it. TAB purchasing, they're kind of a, a good one to highlight. It's a women-owned company. And the name is named after her four children for TAB, for each of the letters there. And mainly, we're selling them PET number one, number two, number two natural. So those are kind of the more, the more valuable plastics. But they are taking it, they are breaking it down and cleaning it and pelletizing it. So it is going into a state where it is going to be used again and, and turned into, to new products. And so as we approach the end here, these are sort of the main considerations that we want to think about when we're thinking of recycling from municipalities. There is market fluctuation. A lot of it is caused by world events, COVID being the biggest one of, of most recent years. And then the consumer purchasing habits. You know, we, we sort of sometimes say that we are a reflection of what our communities are sending us. And if our community members are opting to buy, you know, materials that are a single, single material. That are actually have the dimensions that can be recycled here. That's going to make it so the value is going to be higher. We're going to be able to move material a lot better. Instead of having a bunch of contamination that we have to kind of sort out and remove as best we can. The markets are cyclical. Again, there's rises and falls based on, you know, production of goods, consumption of consumers. You know, the holidays being kind of the most notable time where we see a spike. I think one thing that a lot of people don't think about with recycling is landfilling fees. Landfill capacity is not an easy thing to come by. Landfills are expensive. There are a number of emissions associated with landfills, methane. You know, a lot of CO2 emissions that they might not as visibly attribute to their practices, but landfills are expensive. EPR is Extended Producer Responsibility. That is actually a legislation that shifts the cost of recycling onto the producers of the material. So if they're making a bunch of stuff and, you know, it's a, it's a vital product that we need to buy. It's putting some of the financial responsibility onto them. So they're not inundating communities with a product that might not be as easily recyclable. And then that tax that they're, the money that they're taxed actually goes back to the municipality to help them with their recycling infrastructure and waste collection. Pay-as-you-throw is kind of a similar program, basically just about shifting costs to take it a little bit less off of the municipality. So they're not having to brunt the, the financial burden of waste that might not be easily recyclable. And then I will say, you know, being my department, being outreach and education, that is an added benefit to promoting recycling. It's, it's resource management. You know, all of these items are coming from something that we're taking out of the environment. And when you look at the emissions and again, the resource savings, recycling is environmentally beneficial as opposed to, you know, just putting everything in waste to energy or landfill. And really, this is, you know, one of the last slides, pretty much just to talk about EPR. It's, you know, the producers are going to pay a fee based on the packaging, how it's determined. It'll be given a determination by the EPR council about, you know, what is the percentage that is readily recyclable of that material? They'll be given a fee if there's a certain percentage deemed as a, as an excess. And then that money will then be distributed for, you know, infrastructure, the education and, and increasing recycling access. These are just, you know, some of the programs that we do. We do a lot of educational stuff, school visits. But all of these things can help sort of promote those practices. So we can be recycling more efficiently and, and more economically as well. And just some, some more examples of some of the messaging that we provide. And, you know, we can customize messaging to a town's specific needs. We have our educators who can really establish a connection with your residents and, and find out what they need to recycle better. And with that, I will end my screen sharing and open it up for some questions. Stop. There we go. Sorry, it's on my other screen there. I'm afraid I can't, if anyone's speaking, I can't hear them.
Oh, we're just waiting. Here we go.
And are we recycling one to seven right now? Does the sign say that on, for plastics, one to seven?
Leave us with the sign says. We're not checking numbers of plastic that's going in. It's just people are putting plastic.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nate, Nate, this is Ken Ackley. Do you have a sense of how Monmouth ranks or is evaluated on the purity of what it sends to EcoMain?
We do, we do track contamination. That is on a larger scale. I think we used to have someone who was dedicated to tracking the contamination after COVID and staffing. It was kind of a difficult role to have, as well as just the area that they stand is a highly trafficked one. But I could definitely, I can definitely find that information and send it to you. I would just have to, just do a little, little bit of digging in there.
That, that would be, that would be helpful. Do, do you have a sense of, I, I see in your slide number nine, the revenue sharing that Monmouth has enjoyed over the past three fiscal years for EcoMain? Do you have a sense of what Monmouth has paid in to EcoMain in each of those fiscal years?
Um, I wouldn't, I actually would not. I did work with our accounts department, but again, I can easily get that information for you.
And what is it? It's like thirty thousand a year is our budget for that, right? Somewhere in there, twenty to thirty thousand?
Yeah, unfortunately, the tipping fees are combined.
Oh, so it's hard to break it out.
I don't have a breakout.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So, so Nate, it would be helpful if you could, if you could get us that information.
Absolutely. Yeah. Sorry, I don't have that for you today.
You, you'd mentioned. The reason we've invited you to the meeting tonight was because we were given the impression a few months ago that there was some recycling that the town was sending to you that was being stored and not necessarily recycled. And I, I hear you when you say, well, there's a cyclical nature to some of the trends in recycling. That, you know, prior to the holiday season, when, you know, consumer products are being produced, that there's a lot more packaging that's necessary. And then probably after the holiday season, there's less of a demand for that type of material. Can you elaborate a little bit on how much of the recycling material that we're sending to you is stored? Were held back for more than a year's time?
To my knowledge, I don't believe we really sit on recycling that long. I know that there will be, I do the monthly recycling reports where I just kind of take the, what we, the average of our revenue per ton. And we will, some, some months, there will be no revenue because we will wait until the next month for a more favorable market. Or it might not be willing or worth it to move it at that specific time. But as far as storing recyclables long-term and having them not recycled, I don't believe that is the case. I, I can almost say with certainty that if you're sending recycling here, we're sorting it and bailing it. It's going to a place where it's going to be broken down to be used again as material. I know a lot of people might think, oh, they might just be feeding it into waste to energy. That is not the case. If the, even when the markets are not necessarily, if there might be a weakness in cost or something.
That won't be burned for, for energy then necessarily, if, if it's.
Yes, not if it's bailed as recycling. I can say that we, the only thing that would be put into waste energy from, from recycling is the contamination that we pull out of it.
One thing that concerns us is the, the cost of us sending, sending our trash to the Auburn facility to have it burned for energy. And and the rest of it, we send down to you. But it costs us considerably more transported to you. And tipping fee is for EcoMain is much more than what we pay our tipping fee to the Auburn facility. So that's a major concern for us. Another thing, I, I was a school teacher. And I think back in the nineties. When we, we started, EcoMain came and we started recycling. And it was a big, big deal going on at school. I mean, I don't know if you, all you guys were. But, and I don't know what it is today anymore that if, if it's promoted or not. And then the other concern would be we're no longer in, in charge of our schools. We're in an RSU. And I don't know what they do with their waste. I don't. I don't think they, I think they just dump it into a, one of those big trucks. And all their way. So if the kids are recycling in the classroom, it's not not being really, it's not being recycled. I don't know where the, you know, what is it? River View? I think they use, River View uses, does, I don't know how they, what, how they deal with it. Does anybody here?
Augusta.
Use the hospital.
Yeah.
Riverside.
Riverside.
Nate, do you know, is there any material, is there a percentage material that goes out of your facility that does go to landfill?
If it's being sent out to recycling, I mean, we're putting it out to bid and the people who are bidding on it are paying, you know, a pretty high value for that material. It doesn't make much fiscal sense to buy that material, transport it, and then they would also have to pay the cost to dispose of it. The only, I know that all of the material stays domestic in North America with the exception of paper. Mixed paper, like office papers and newspapers, that will be sent to, I think India is a, a, a large buyer of that material.
There's nothing leaving your facility other than the contamination potentially that would be going to landfill?
Exactly. So, I mean, there is no, there's no way that we can say with, you know, one hundred percent by following the bail all the way to the destination. But again, it, it really doesn't make fiscal sense to, to buy this material at the value that they're, they're purchasing it for. To just then again, kind of pay to dispose of it. And we have good relationships with those mills. They're established, you know, buyers of our material that we know that they are making this stuff into recyclable material.
We have to make a decision during our next budget season to what we're going to do. Because we could save a lot of money if we didn't send stuff down to you guys. And
Just, just so you're aware, Nate, the, the tipping fees at MWA are in the low sixties.
High forties. They're, they're about a third.
High forties. Okay. I guess it's changed since I last checked in. And, and I understand the tipping fees at EcoMain are in the low one hundreds.
Yeah. And I, I really think that factors into sort of the whole picture of what we're doing. Because you're ensuring this is recyclable or you're ensuring that material is being recycled. You can get some energy out of it and waste energy. And, you know, we have a waste energy facility here. But I will say that when we're thinking about the costs of just one disposing that material and then sending it off to a finite, you know, landfill space or an Asheville space in this, in this sense. And as well as, you know, you're taking those resources, using them once, and then, you know, you're getting some energy out. But I think if you look at the waste hierarchy, if you look at the emissions and resource use overall, you are making a significant savings in emissions by reusing that material. It really comes down to, you know, there are going to be stronger years than others, but there's always the sustainability piece, which is one of the biggest elements that EcoMain is trying to do. It's not just find a, a solution for the waste. It's a, you know, a long-term sustainable solution. You know, I don't know if disposing everything straight to, to trash is, you know, necessarily a long-term sustainable solution.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in sustainability, of course. And, and maybe you could help us sort of get to an apples-to-apples comparison. Because we do have a substantial financial difference in the tipping fees. We also have a substantial difference in transportation costs because it's twice as far to Portland as it is to Auburn. And then we have an additional problem at our transfer station where our equipment is getting close to the end of its life. And so we're going to be looking at, right now, we have two compactors. Both of which are hanging by a thread. And, and so we're going to be looking at a very substantial investment that the, you know, the taxpayers are going to have to make if we want to continue that the, you know, the taxpayers are gonna have to make if we want to continue to separate the two. And so I'm uh open-minded, of course, about how we would make an apples-to-apples comparison, but those are you know, sort of an intersection of three very real costs that are gonna be quantified in dollars at this point uh in the very near future.
Yeah, and I I completely understand that. Um, I know that um a statistic that I've I've sort of used before is um uh in curbs, it's about curbside collection, but it's pretty comparable to most um just recycling programs. Is that it usually um to recycle, collect, uh to collect recycling, it's usually thirteen percent more costly on average. Um, but you're actually um reducing greenhouse uh greenhouse gas emissions sixfold. Um, and I know that uh, you know, isn't, isn't the most fiscal um example. Um, but uh landfilling and a lot of emissions associated with that aren't um, aren't the best for the environment. And while um the the tipping fees, you know, are designed to um, you know, cover costs, again, being a nonprofit, um, it's, it's really designed to cover costs. And we want to see more access to recycling in the state. Um, I I completely understand the the fiscal side of things. Um, but I I wanna say that it's uh, it's kind of more than a fiscal issue in, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Um, I will uh get that, um, get that information to you. Um, probably first thing tomorrow, I can send that right over. Um, and I, again, I really appreciate the opportunity to to speak with you all. Um, and please uh reach out if you have any more questions or if we can um uh help uh discuss anything further.
Nick, I have one more, one more question when you're doing research. If you could let us know, uh, I know that you probably don't have the town-by-town information in terms of specific to Monmouth. But if you could let us know what percentage of waste is considered contaminated and then turned into energy when we send it to Eco Main?
Um, I know we have a contamination rate of about eleven percent on average. Um, that's across the board. Um, and that's basically from people putting stuff in that, you know, isn't acceptable at our facility. Um Unfortunately, a lot of uh labeling um can be uh misleading in that way.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, have a good rest of your meeting and um I look forward to hearing from you.
Next is uh, and had reports and uh yeah, you want to talk?
I bet you got good news. I was able to complete interviews for the transfer station positions this week. Um, ended up interviewing six candidates and was able to hire three out of those six.
Um, I stole one.
And yes, Justin stole one, but it would, it all worked out. Um, so um, the first gentleman was able to start today and the other two gentlemen are starting Saturday morning. My plan is to have the PW staff stay with the transfer station through the month of November. Um, hopefully by Thanksgiving weekend or maybe just shortly thereafter, the new crew will be up to speed to a point that uh we can let them be on their own. Um, if not, I'll adjust accordingly. Uh, we're finally moving in the good direction there. Um, I'm very happy with the candidates that I hired. I I really hope that they uh like it and stick around because I think they're good people. This Saturday, the fourth, um, I'm enacting uh picking at the transfer station. So, um, I've got the guidelines that we discussed. Um, you know, the employees will have it, um, be aware of it and people can commence with uh rummaging for treasure. So, um, hopefully that goes well. Um, I don't anticipate any problems. Uh
We had some sort of sign.
No signs, uh.
Can we do like a temporary thing with cardboard and a magic marker?
I might be able to get it onto the big sign that's out that says picking allowed, uh, you know, something, but.
Yeah, so we.
It's there. I'll call it a, let's call it a soft opening.
Exactly.
How about, how about you just print it out on an eight by ten, eight, eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper? And tape it up to the side, to the side of the metal dumpster. So officially, it is posted.
Uh, so that will start this weekend. Well, um just so it's in the public, me, next Saturday, the eleventh, Veterans Day, the transfer station will be closed. Uh, in recognition of the holiday. Uh, it's rare that the transfer station affected by holidays, but when they get the weekend, um, we have to observe them. So this is, so the public knows it's out there. Justin has already placed it on Facebook, but just so people don't show up and have a surprise. All works is going well. We're obviously you know, the staffing of sharing with transfer station, we haven't been as productive as we wanna be, but uh we are ready if winter hits. Um, and we're doing well otherwise. That's all I've got at the moment.
Are the, are the folks that you hired familiar faces and Monmouthites?
There are uh two are Monmouth residents and one is a Wales resident. Uh, and all had uh used and were familiar with the transfer station.
I met a guy named Jeff today.
Yes, Jeff was the gentleman that was able to start today.
He's from Wales, Vermont.
Monmouth.
What's his last name?
Lavasser. Yes.
So, so there's sand and it's all, it's all.
Sand is being delivered daily. Um, uh, and yes, my salt shed is stocked and uh all but, all but one sander unit is a hundred percent ready. Um, couple aren't still mounted in trucks yet, but that'll happen right off. Uh, and plows and wings and hydraulics um are ready to go. Couple, I was always a a last second thing, but we're we're ready if Mother Nature turns on the switch.
And you're having a good time with the, with the uh beavers.
Uh, yes, we, we have a I better phrase that carefully. Yes, uh, the, yes, the beavers are wreaking havoc.
Where?
Fish hatchery road and the dual culverts near Lance Reeds.
Yeah.
Um, Wilson Pond Road past the North Fire Station towards Winthrop. They have got a whole development going on down there. Just past North Monmouth Fire Station on Wilson Pond Road.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is a dual culvert there and uh they are in fact, I loved it.
With waterfronts.
Yeah, uh, Bottom Road has a large culvert for the bog and they are active there. Um where else did we catch it? Uh, Wilson Pond by the Beaver Brook Culvert. Um, Trapper, Trapper's been contacted and um it's right now, it's just damage control so that if, you know, they're, they're, every night, they're basically path clogging, completely clogging at least one height. So we have to keep on top of it. We had to take the excavator down to the fish hatchery culverts and excavate out all the material and haul it off. They had that much.
Wow.
Two dump trucks.
Wow, yep.
And that was over just a four or five day period.
You could have had your link all set in no time.
Yeah, yeah. We should have hired them.
I blew us a couple hundred saplings that they're clogging the, the end of the.
That would be the other end, yeah.
I get, I get more view because they've taken all the saplings off the water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've seen that.
I'm not gonna go there and whittle point. I cut him flat.
The guy who tried last year was crap again.
Yes, uh.
Keep him out of trouble.
He comes and gets him.
Yeah, miserable things. They are. I mean, we've nonstop and I mean, I've been fighting them. I I started probably as soon as my father thought I wouldn't drown in the brook out back, but I mean, we've been fighting him out behind there and now they've moved to a different spot. We're hoping to send him back over to your property on the other side of the flats, but oh, it's terrible. Yeah, well, there's plenty of uh uh alders over there, but oh my God, it's crazy and the amount of stuff that you have to haul off. So, yeah, it's insane.
I, I don't know if it'll affect your culvert or not, but down by the campground, um, the bog is probably thirty inches to thirty-six inches higher than it should be.
No way.
So that, when that gets dug out, and typically, they had a big issue with snowmobilers out in the bog a few years back. Um, and typically, they, they want that removed so they don't get that layer of ice and then snow, and it will not freeze underneath. Um, so that's probably gonna get dug out here at some point. Usually someone from the snowmobile club will get a hold of the landowner and the landowner makes the complaint and then someone comes out with a machine and it digs it out. So there's gonna be a huge water flow over there.
Yes.
For several days after they dig that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And and your culvert is on shaky ground as it is, so they may wanna.
I don't know that Zane we could do.
No, no, it's just gonna go.
It's just a matter of
Keeping an eye on it to make sure the road doesn't wash out.
You wanna mention our meeting we had with the campground?
Oh, yes, uh, Justin and I uh met with the Dela Stone Campground, the general manager and the facilities manager.
Yeah, I think that's who it was, yeah.
Uh, and we discussed um the culvert, the replacement, uh, the impact to them uh as far as closure of Wilson Pond Road um for potentially one week, possibly more, depending on weather, construction issues. Hopefully less than a week. Um the Army Corps of Engineers, I believe it was, states that in-water work can only be done between July fifteenth, September thirtieth. So that limits our time. That's of course the campground busy season. Uh, Rob Crew was the engineer for the town and the project was there as well. He proposed starting construction the day after Labor Day. Or, um, that was mostly agreeable by the campground. Um, if there's a potential um work through for that. They are going to reach out to the town and uh and attempt to see what their secondary access route options are. My first opinion, they need to have a secondary access at campground. Um, so hopefully they will follow through with that. Um then it was discussed, told them us breakdown of the project and it was discussed that uh, that maybe they'd like to discuss with their corporate offices uh helping out with the project. Um, cost. Um, and I filled them in on the history of basically why that culvert and why that roadbed area has failed uh basically due to the previous orders of operation of the dam for that pond area. So, um, I don't believe this history that have a full understanding of it. Um, so they, they're in the loop. Um, they're aware and we'll see what they're very concerned about the culvert, obviously, as they should be. They're concerned that if it fails before the construction, what will happen? And there's, there's hypotheticals and uh what we could do, but um you know, we're just in a, you know, holding pattern, wait and see.
We need to raise more money to for the project.
Yeah, I have an, I have an updated cost estimate, but um we need, we'll need to kick in more if we get more from our neighbors, which now I have an updated cost estimate. Our first, they, they were the first ones that I asked. And I uh, I tried to make clear to them that we're gonna, we have to go back to the well to the taxpayers for a road, which is basically a road to nowhere for Monmouth residents and that we don't receive any tax money from anybody on the other side of that bridge. So I said, if you want an article to pass, you might wanna, you, you might wanna explain that to your higher ups, that they might wanna make a contribution that I can then list on the warrant so that the residents are aware that they have some skin in the game. They said they would take that to their corporate people.
And Leeds and Wayne?
We'll get to them. I just got the estimate on Monday from Brew, so this, this is the first people we got. Well, I'd say I don't wanna ask for more than we need, but I'm uh I think they, Wayne Town Manager is out on leave, so I'll have to figure out what we'll approach over there um without him being there.
What's the new cost estimate?
Um, three sixty-five right now is the total.
And what did we reserve?
Um, well, we put a certain amount in for the Woodbury Pond Dam that and the Cocknowalken Bridge, uh, the Cocknowalken Dam and the Cocknowalken Dam was almost twice what we estimated. So right now, we would we're, we're close to a hundred thousand short on that project right now. That's, so whatever we don't get from others, we'll have to raise.
With no benefit to Monmouth.
Very little, very, very little. The expansion of the, of the campground puts half of maybe twelve campsites in Monmouth. So whatever that's worth, not much. Yes.
And and the other part that we didn't really discuss with them is just the wear and tear on the dirt portion of Wilson Pond Road. The increased, they're, they're definitely serving more campers than the Beaver Brook Campground did with the expansion. They're gonna serve even more. That, that dirt road is just taking a beating. This weather this year did not help, but the, the increased traffic, you know it's, it's just the whole slate coast.
Can we install a toll?
Yeah, exactly.
According to them, and I don't know if it's true or not, they said they have an easement over that road for the campground. Did you hear him say that?
I did not.
So I need to look into that, but they claim that, he, he claimed that in the meeting that they have an easement over the road. So if they do, then we're we have very little recourse on them because somebody signed that in the past, but I'll see if I can find it. He said it, so I don't know if it's true, but I will, I, I, I will see if I can find it somewhere. It would be in the registry, I assume. I just haven't had any, I haven't had a chance to look for it.
It's possible to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the town authorized? I was joking. Is the town authorized to charge tolls?
I doubt it.
The bridge, you know, toll bridge.
Other towners using the beach.
Charging the toll.
Oh, no, it's like one of those, take, you know, charge your registration thing, right?
Let the road get really bad.
Yeah, unfortunately, that, yes. Yeah, it, it is right now. So we're, we're attempting to grade, final grade next week on most of the dirt roads. Forecast is not favorable at the moment, but forecast has changed, so if not, let's push it the week after.
We'd be allowed to do a toll run?
No, never did. Never did. It never, never came up.
It's Berlin, if you'd like to.
Good evenings. Um gave away eight hundred pieces of candy last night, a little over eight hundred pieces of candies last night at our booth down at Cumston Hall.
Not that many kids, but that many pieces of candy, yeah.
You took about eighty yourself, but anyway. So you're all aware, um Monmouth and Winter Police Departments are participating in uh no shade November.
Oh.
At a cost of forty dollars per person per department, so it costs you eighty bucks. In Winter, uh that money, the proceeds from the just go to a the uh in Winter, it's going to the uh food shelter. Uh so last year we donated a little over four hundred dollars to them. Uh this is the first year we'll be doing it in Monmouth and the guys haven't determined where um the proceeds are going to be going, but just to let you know, if you see us out in the beltwood, here's that that's why. As you're all aware of the events of last week's tragedy, um both Monmouth and Winter responded in force down there. Uh all four of the Monmouth officers, plus myself, uh responded down to Lisbon, Lewiston to help them out. And I had uh six of the Winter officers down there. You know, two of the low-season guys back to cover Monmouth and Winter, just case where it's ugly headed down here. Um and as you are all aware, we had several searches going on in the Monmouth area on uh Thursday and Friday. And I'd just like to um publicly commend men and women of the Monmouth and Winter Police Departments for their tireless efforts during the uh two-day event search for the shooter. Yeah, like you said, they'd be committed to their. That is, yeah. They just did an outstanding job as a team, both Monmouth and Winter pulled together, worked worked very well together with the surrounding communities down there in an attempt to to locate locate the shooter. I just wanted to com- uh publicly comment and thank them for their their efforts down there. Didn't go unnoticed by all departments that we had, a real good turnout show up down there, so. Uh hopefully we never ever ever have to go through anything like this again, but it did bring to like the the fact that uh we need to get our plan in Monmouth here. Going again because it kind of stalled. And so Dana and I are gonna be working on getting the new school crisis plan up and running again. Uh that's where we're at right now and I just wanted to let you know that I am proud of the men doing that. What a person, yeah. Any questions?
I just want to say it's been a tough couple of weeks for all of us. And uh we'd be very thankful to have our own police department and to know that we're making through that a contribution to keeping the rest of us safe. And I'd also like to personally thank you for taking the initiative to get started, to 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 be proactive with our school.
They've been um very forthcoming and and helpful in in putting this plan together. I'll I'll tell you that the uh the whole the uh administration of the schools, the superintendent of R S U two uh had been very supportive. He's actually shown up at every meeting I've had. Uh so that's a plus in itself, just getting that commitment around the table to put a solid plan together so that in the event something should happen here that everybody knows what their responsibilities are, uh what the objective is and what everybody's roles are.
Is is that, so it's not really totally ready yet?
The the written portion of the plan i- is complete and then approved by the the committee. Um we have to do a tabletop exercise and then we have to do a uh kind of a walkthrough and put the plan in place. Make sure it works, that we don't have any flaws that we haven't worked in.
Is the is the end goal to get the the school board to bless the thing or you or is that not something that is that not a, I'm just curious what the end?
The school board um will be presented with a copy of it once it's finished.
Okay, but it's not for their approval personally, okay.
Have you have you thought about, you know, doing what you did at the school and other town buildings about the numbering in the windows? To allow people from the outside to be able to say we're in room six or whatever. I mean, really, the police department has one window. The fire department really doesn't have any windows either, but the town office has, you know, a few, so, you know, just because of the training I do in offices, when we talk about evacuation plans and window plans and how, you know. If that has ever, you know, been been a topic of discussion to do that sort of, you know, numbering at the town office.
Yeah, no, in the in the smaller, smaller facilities, we haven't, it's just um if we, for the schools, we we went that route because there are so many rooms in all the buildings that if we have a report that someone is in room A six, then our eyes on the outside can find where A six is without guessing.
Yeah.
And we can monitor what's going on in A six from outside without jeopardizing anybody.
Yes.
But no, we have not thought about that in smaller buildings at this point.
So every window would be numbered.
Every window is numbered.
In the school now it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
As it is.
Mm-hmm.
Corresponds to the room number on the inside.
Yes.
Whatever the room number is on the door is on the window.
Window, so somebody, you know, because you would never know where those rooms were, because you're not in the school every day, so they put the numbers in the window, so if anything God forbid ever happens, somebody on the outside can easily say that's the room we need to focus on. Figure it out.
Yeah.
All the things we never thought we'd have to think about and worry about.
I assume it's just as useful for the fire department.
Well, exactly.
Window to throw a ladder on or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
A side, B side, C side, D side, so they are, you they already know where they're going just by facing the building.
Yeah.
There there was a plan when I was teaching, which was, you know, quite a to uh uh we had something in our girlhood, I remember what it was, to put it in the window uh when uh we were locked down. I don't know. But it didn't involve a number. Okay. It wasn't. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh and next is.
Uh just that I I took one of Dan's candidates. We think that'll work good for our our custodial position, so he's gonna start. I think the I think we decided, I can't remember, I think it might be December, the first week of December, I think, I could, I I we were talking about around Thanksgiving, but I think I think that's where we settled, yeah. Um so hopefully that'll work out.
I'm happy to help out the town.
And he's a local person too.
He is local, yes, he's.
It's the Monmouth guy.
Yeah. I think he's in Monmouth and he's he's new to town and he's been building a house. I can't remember where, but he's got little kids and stuff, so hopefully he'll he's a younger guy.
The boat launch restrooms are on that list.
Yes, one way or the other, we're gonna do something with that. He he's gonna try to take care of it and if not, we may uh 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 look for somebody that uh will take care of it on a regular basis, you know, get a contractor or somebody, but we'll see how that all works out.
We um uh passing out surveys to people who are voting.
Reagan was going to talk to you about that. Has she reached out to you yet?
Nope.
Okay, because I talked to her last week. She said that she can easily get them together uh uh for the election, but she just wanted to make sure that she understood what you were exactly looking for. Whether it was just the same survey to put out again or.
Yeah, exactly the same, same survey.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed. How many, how many absentee ballots have we given out? I have no idea. I don't issue them, so I don't know. I couldn't tell you, honestly.
Because we should be obviously including absentee voters.
Okay.
Um and then uh part of that motion that we made when we approved that resurveying was some sort of online advertising that they were available.
Okay, when requested. Okay, I thought she was gonna reach out to you, so I just, I haven't heard from her, so I didn't do anything. I will uh I'll take care of it. I'll put it on Facebook or something.
And have you had any responses to the position at the town office?
Yes, we have two interviews set up. We have three or four good candidates, previous municipal experience in towns next nearby, so.
Great.
I I think that the, I think our work schedule honestly is is beneficial in in some regard to some of these people. They like the thirty-two hours a week. They like the idea of having, I think, Fridays off, you know, I think that's helping in in this. And at least the applicants that we have, it sounds like that's what they're looking for. They're looking for a better work-life balance, I think. They work in other towns where they work every day and they wanna be able to be home or, I think, but. Uh like this time, it's helping us.
Yeah.
UAW wants to do that, too.
Hi.
UAW wants that.
Right.
And everything's good with the next Tuesday?
Yeah, I think everything's on track.
Great.
Yeah. Rich has been in, all all the, all the election workers that have been working the last several years have all signed up again, I believe. I think all, everybody, yeah, yeah. Dawn has been in to make sure that uh Jessica knows about what needs to happen on that day or what she needs to remember to bring in the morning or whatever.
Well, add in the box.
Right, the box, yeah, yeah.
It was a nightmare, but.
Yeah.
She's she's a smart gal, she really is. Like if she gets one under her belt, she's just not.
Is there anything remaining on the dam project punch list?
Nope, it's all done. We we got the sign off, the check will go out, it'll be on your next warrant, the final check, they're all done. As far as we know, if Dan needs any training, they're willing to come back and show him, but you know, I think it's all.
Actually, first chance I've had to get down was today. I walked the site and operated the gate um and everything is A okay from my viewpoint.
The original bid was just almost double what we had estimated for.
Yeah, so the bid didn't change, we still stayed in that.
We had a couple of minor change orders. I think the total was like twelve or fifteen thousand, which was different, but it was actual work that they recommended, the engineer agreed after they started digging things out, like they uh uh cleared out quite a ways downstream. And they also put a much longer solid uh uh concrete surface underneath. They were originally just gonna fix what was there, but they decided to expand it in both directions to try to give it more more heft, so that stuff couldn't go underneath it. There were some good improvements, but that's all that really was. It wasn't anything of any surprising nature, just once you pump the water out, you can see what's down there.
Yeah.
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 I saw the uh the note that the auditors were in the office, starting the audit process for.
The sixth, is it the sixth? I think it's the sixth, next next week.
Next week, okay. Um any word on the report from last year? Like our audit report?
We have it, it's posted on our website, like the electronic version.
So weren't we one fiscal year behind?
We were two.
Two, and so we we got a presentation on one of the fiscal years that we were in a rares on.
Yeah.
And the second fiscal year, when is?
That's the one they're coming in next week to work on. So we're still gonna be one year behind when you get that one, because we won't have the one for this past June thirtieth.
Gotcha. And so do we have a sense of the turnaround time to expect on the the one that we're one year behind on?
The one that was for June thirty of, just the most recent, June thirty, or twenty-three.
All right, let's go through this. Fiscally, we, the one, the report we just had was for what fiscal year?
Twenty-one.
Ending in June twenty-one.
Yeah.
And so the the office visit they're doing next week.
Is for twenty-two.
Is for twenty-two. And do we have a sense of uh when we will, should be expecting results from that?
No.
Okay.
He's he, he's hopeful that his work will be done next week, if he can get everything he needs from Mark next week. That would be the end of their work internally with us on that, and then it's just.
On-site stuff, yeah.
Right, then it's their process on their end of when they can get it into their work schedule with uh Casey to get the final sign off. The guy that does the work with us isn't isn't the guy that can sign off on it, then it goes to Casey for his review. So however long that takes, it's really out of our control. So I don't have a date for that.
We're not, so we're not really a year behind.
Yes, oh, we are. Yeah, we're a full year behind. Right now, we should be working on the one that just ended this past June thirtieth. Uh because we were, we were two years behind, we're, we got one done, we're still two years behind because as everything falls back in the work schedule, our year keeps going, so we keep moving to a next year that now we have two that are uncompleted again. We have twenty-two and twenty-three, which are they're both not completed right now. Ideally, we would be working on twenty-three right now so that you would have that going through the budget.
Budget period.
Can we come up with a plan for getting caught up?
It is really out of our control, Ken, because these auditors don't exist anymore, like everything else. We are very fortunate that R K O didn't dump us. We are now their smallest client by almost five thousand residents. They got rid of all of their small clients, like they kept us because we've been with them for like twenty-something years and we don't go up to bed every three years like some towns do. So they have a relationship with this community and they kept us. Um they just don't have the people to do the work.
So what are the, what are the other small communities?
The community that I came from before I come here, they haven't had one done in four years, because they're so small they can't find an auditor that will do the work. So they're just not doing that.
Ouch.
They've been out to bed for almost three years straight and they have not had a single person get on their work. It's very hard to find, they don't, what has happened, if you were to ask them, I think that their explanation would be the municipal bankruptcies that happened during the two thousands, the big cities, the the national standards, the Gatsby Standard Board has made and across the board changed what has to be done to a municipal audit. So municipal auditors are forced to go through the same rigorous testing for Monmouth that they do for the city of Chicago. So what's happened is a lot of municipal auditors have gotten out of the business because they have to spend too much time for the small amount of money that like we're willing to pay them. And they can do other things uh for other clients faster and make more money on it. So they just aren't doing it. So I'm very hesitant to beat on R K O too much, because I think they will just get rid of us, because we're not worth much money and we're only paying them fifteen grand a year.
And and the benefit is that we've gone to, I mean, you know, an outside accountant, accounting firm that they can access the documents and they're easier to get and understand and and done the way they want them done, too.
Right, I'm hopeful we can get caught up, exactly. And Casey both said after our last audit that they were very excited to have Mark uh be the one feeding them the information, because he basically gives it to them in a box with a bow on top and all they have to do is look at it, because he's an auditor himself, so he knows exactly the format in which they wanna see it. So I'm hopeful if we can get through this one, that there'll be some room on the work schedule fairly soon. We won't have to wait nine months to get back into R K O's work schedule to do the current one. So I'm hopeful that over the next year, we can get back on track like everybody would like to, so that we can have the twenty-four audit done in the fall, completed by November or December, so that you all have the the right information as you go into your next budget the following year, but I can't do anything about it in the short term. Unfortunately.
Any other select board report?
Uh public comment?
There is nobody. Nobody online.
No comments. I do, I have a comment next. And it is, it's regarding, I lost the chief. He drove and got into Lewiston from a moose hunt vacation that he was supposed to be having. We got into Lewiston at midnight, God knows when was the last time he actually left after working forty-eight, so I mean he's due some more vacation time, he must say, but yes, very grateful for him.
You missed, you missed your vacation up up country?
Yes, I was called back to the Lewiston. Putting this on. I left the, I left Ashland.
Oh, God.
It was before eight and I was in Lisbon at midnight and I.
It was before eight, and I was in Lisbon at midnight, and I stopped at home and actually showered before I went down. Yeah, so.
Very grateful. Very dedicated though. You're grateful.
Did you come down Route eleven or go back over and get on Route one?
Oh, Route eleven.
That's no fun at night.
Over the tar.
Is it?
Moose blend in fine.
Yeah, they do, yes.
And you had a blocker, right, some of the way?
When I go back to German Mills, the gas station, German Mills, and there was a state trooper there, I said, you going to Lewiston by jam? He goes, yeah, I said, I'll be right behind you.
Yep.
Fortunately, the Toyota Tundra couldn't keep up with these groovings.
Yeah.
I lasted about three and a half minutes behind him.
Oh, my gosh, oh.
But your Tundra would have been kind of uh, both safe, I mean.
No, not, not with the Bigfoot boys.
Not with the hood, no.
So we thank you.
That, yes.
And the whole community of first responders, for sure.
Was there a search on the Ridge Road?
Yes.
What was that about?
Um, and the search on Gilman Road, the search, Kelson Road, a search on Ridge Road, and the search on Warren Road. That was based on information the command post received that we are not privy to.
Because they, the, the family own land, and my mom is.
I don't know. I don't know a hundred percent for sure why. All we were is support for them while I was doing it.
Dan went out and helped, helped pull out a big huge vehicle, yeah.
On someone's lawn, they destroyed someone's lawn, yes.
Yeah, and uh, you got attached. From uh Boston.
Landowner should get it, because it did several thousand dollars worth of damage to this guy's property.
Who, who has to take care of that?
Got a contact to the National Security Agency.
They have to do it.
I, we have no idea who to contact, because we don't know who was out there, and I was in the back, it was. National Security. Yeah, uh, I think the Homeland Security out of Boston was the group. Good luck. Yeah. Uh, yeah. It's very unfortunate, but whatever. It is a block, a block damage, um, but you know. Myself and Tyler responded, um, with the voters, uh, you know, we had, we had armed escorts through the vehicle and out, so just doing what we were asked lightly. Damage was extensive, so it's over a subject each field.
Oh, my God.
I, nothing that we could just dump some home and call it good. So. I. Yeah, that's all I'll say.
We're, we're, we're keeping you, it's okay.
I, I wanna, I would be here to uh answer your questions for the next fifteen minutes. If you, do you need me to, am I just here to answer any questions if you have any?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, uh, Rich and I are.
Yeah.
Privy to already.
Both has, so, yeah.
Absolutely. I can talk a little bit about the lease agreement, would that be something you want?
And also, you need to talk about the, the.
Thanks, yeah, well, yeah, let me do, we'll, we'll take them in order, does that sound good?
Yeah.
All right, I come over here. I don't, I don't really see it from the, uh, that part. Um, hello, everyone. Um, so uh, I'm here for two different reasons. The first reason is for the lease agreement between the Theater of Monmouth uh and the Town of Monmouth. Um, and this was a really, uh, I, I have to say, really, like, this is the first time I've had to go through it, obviously, but a very easy process with a lot of different stakeholders, a lot of different people, a lot of different review, uh, but we managed to get there and make some changes uh in this uh agreement. Um, some prior agreements that I think uh allow for flexibility on both sides for the Theater of Monmouth and the town, uh, as well as quantifying some things that in the past have simply been um, uh, un-unquantified. I think is the best way to put it. Um, so one of the things that I wanted to tell you a little bit about was this lease uh is for five years, which is a change prior, it was ten years. Uh, the five-year lease was uh so that there could be a little bit more flexibility. A ten-year lock-in uh seemed to be a little bit much, so the five years is different. Uh, the lease is for twelve thousand dollars each year. Um, so we've signed a five-year lease, this is the five-year lease, that's sixty thousand dollars uh for use of uh Cumston Hall from the Theater of Monmouth, and I think that's important that people know um that it is a, that that it is, um, you know, the, the Theater of Monmouth is paying um their fair share. Uh, the, the number was arrived at through a number of different ways, what we charge already for a nonprofit in Monmouth use of the Opera Hall and um the Caucus Hall as a dressing room. It also uh took into consideration a comparable office space to what the annex uh is. And when we looked at it, I can be very specific for you. Uh, the annex is approximately five hundred square feet uh of usable space, uh, and after checking uh with comparable spaces as well as real estate brokers, uh, it looked like it was anywhere between a dollar twenty-five per square foot and two dollars a square foot. So what we did was we cut the middle, and we used a dollar and sixty uh a square foot, which gave us eight hundred dollars a month to rent that office space. When you combine the, the uh, uh, come, the uh Opera Hall and Caucus Hall rental along with that office space rental, you get eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, and the remaining four hundred dollars uh is uh was considered to be sort of like wear and tear, um, incidentals, things like paint, things like uh light bulbs, if we need to replace those as well. So that's how we arrived at the twelve thousand dollar uh number. Um, the uh, there is a, uh, there is provisions in the lease uh for if the trustees deem uh due to whatever rising energy costs, that uh covered some of that from the theater, there is now a formula, and it's the CPI formula. So we would multiply the current rent times the CPI index, uh, and then whatever that uh amount was would be added to the rent. So now there is a way that we can quantify um and make numbers uh attach to a lot of things that happen. I just wanna say thank you to Doug, thank you to Kristen, then thank you to uh Justin, who was out outstanding, put me in touch with the right people from the town council, uh, our review and things like that, so uh it was, it was good. It, it was a really nice process that, that followed the timeline perfectly.
Yes, sir. Dennis, how much was it uh for the last ten-year lease a year?
It was, it changed. So I believe it started out in, I, I wanna say it started out at like thirty-five hundred dollars. Then I think it went up to five thousand. Then I think it went up to eight thousand, which is, uh, I believe the first year I was here, and then now it's sort of leveled off at twelve. And that was also part of the five, five-year agreement. I think this is a, a, I think this is a good price point and beneficial to the town.
You get it back from the theater?
Um, not really, because I was able to show the numbers, how we came about it. Um, and, and while, you know, of course, you know, we wanted to be less, um, I, I felt like for, you know, the, the for what we're getting and, and the, the exchange, it seems to be a nice amenable agreement. So I was thankful for that on both ends. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Well, does the theater have the right to use the uh, the hall all year round, or is it?
No, sir. That is correct. So the, the lease period, um, the lease period is basically what we refer to as their season. The season begins June first, um, and runs through what is now referred to as Indigenous Peoples' Day, or the, basically the second Monday in October. That is their unlimited, that they are paying for that access. Anything outside of that window is handled like a normal Monmouth nonprofit rental.
But the annex is year-round.
The annex is year-round, yes.
All we used to do, wh- when I was, I've been a trustee for quite a few years, and uh but we based it on the energy, what we tried to, on the energy use, how much oil was burned and how much electricity was used to, for the uh heating and air conditioning and uh and, and we, we kind of figured in maybe water, sewer, but uh that was never so, so big. It was mostly energy. And, and it was always, uh, it would drive you, but that, that he tried to figure out with, with our metering system.
It was impossible, and to me, when I went, went on to the hall trustees, it didn't make sense, so.
It didn't make sense, and that was on the theater board.
Yeah.
It didn't make sense. Yeah, and that's, and that's part of it, and, and part of the job that I've done, tried to do over the last three years, is some of what I refer to as Cumston Hall lore, where it's, it's, it has been spoke but never writ. Uh, that's what we're trying to, to sort of get away from, have reasons and, and, and square footages and, and real data to back up, well, charge.
Yes, how does the revenue come in, like, from other events that go on there? Um, you, you know, the pizza parties and the comedy nights and?
Um, what, what, generally, it depends on who is sponsoring it. So if the Friends of Cumston Hall sponsor it, it goes in, it's a Friends of Cumston Hall event, um, and the Friends of Cumston Hall uh split the money, right? We do a, a, like, the comedy night coming up is a, a split with the artist. Um, if there is a time where Cumston Hall for rental money, I just basically process that, give that to Lori, and I believe that it goes back into the general fund. So there's no, like, you know, Cumston makes the money, but it just sort of gives it back to the general fund after that.
And the other thing that Dennis has done is, there's a, a way to sign up and do a form right online, and depending on what you are, you can go on there and see all the fees that he charges, that we charge.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Um, that recharge for people to use different parts of the hall, either the basement or the caucus hall or the opera hall and, or the reception room, you know, so there's different areas. Exactly, outdoor space too, so we now have a way to do that, and it's got a, a fixed schedule to go by, so. It's been a blessing to have Dennis and to have his help and his expertise with all of this.
This weekend, there's a wedding, so the Butterfield Bay weddings, we're very excited.
Yeah.
It seems like.
Who's gonna marry them?
It's not me, I'm, I'm just playing music, I'm just playing music.
It seems like since you've been there, Dennis, I mean, the hall was used significantly more than it ever has been, uh, which I think is great, and when you let a building sit idle, and it is not good.
Well, it's.
The more people you put through there, the more it gets cleaned, um, it, it's not good for them to sit idle, so it's great that you're doing all these events and generating more revenue to help cover the costs.
Yeah, it is, that's, I appreciate that very much. I think that's the highest compliment that I could get, uh, because that building is not a museum, but it's also not a casino. So it's not gonna ever make money. Um, but one of the things that I like about it is it deserves to be used, that's why it was built. And so I think that it honors the nature of the building.
Wait a minute, we just talked about toll roads, what about a casino?
Broke the online betting rules, I think it started.
We're tangentializing.
I like it.
Uh, but that's it, that's the lease.
Yeah.
Hey, what can you tell us about the H D A C before you have to go yet?
Uh, I do absolutely for you. Um, so one of the other things that I have been sort of with my eyes on for the last three years since I got hired was efficiency at Cumston. Uh, and part of what I have found uh over the years is the systems that were in place in two thousand, when the, uh, what I would call the millennium campaign really upgraded most everything in the space, those systems are now reaching the end of their usable life. And so what I'm doing is trying to turn our eyes towards what will happen for the next twenty years. And this is, a little bit of this was sort of intimated uh with RFP that we put out about upgrading and seeing about replacing the condensers at Cumston, that was unsatisfied results from that. Um, so what we did, what I did was I got in touch with Train. I know a, a gentleman that works there, his name is Bud Taylor. Um, and I, I asked them if this was something that they could do, and, and they said, we do this all the time. So essentially, what we're looking for at Cumston is we would like to reduce fossil fuel usage, basically get as much far away from number two heating oil as possible. Um, use the same infrastructure in Cumston, so we don't have to take anything out, replace anything, or add other stuff. Uh, and we're trying to basically be more efficient uh with the way we heat the space. Right now, the library, even though it's upstairs, multiple areas upstairs and downstairs, if you turn the heat on downstairs, it will uh heat the whole entire space. So even though I know your group is coming in to use the basement, um, I would have to turn the heat on in the library, even because that's the only split it has. Um, there are other ways to control it, but that would probably be the easiest way to describe it. Um, so we wanna make sure that we have more control. We wanna make sure that the systems of control are more up to date. Right now, it is a, it is a very fragile, um, you know, uh, uh, Microsoft Internet Explorer-based uh interface with the system, um, that is not user-friendly, I would say. Uh, and so we're looking at just basic control issues. Um, and then the, the end of the day is about money. Mostly, to me, it's about money. Um, and luckily, uh, there's already been a chunk of money set aside for this exact purpose. Uh, and when we got the information back from Train, we were very excited at a number of different aspects of their plan. Um, all, just because it was, it was sort of what exactly we had been waiting to see. How can we, you know, I didn't want a full replacement of what's already there, that's old news. How can we move sort of forward? And this is what we have discovered. Um, the plan, you can see, there are, I, I don't wanna read it to you, but I think some of the, the, the big things for me were, a, a lot of this, because Cumston is historic, because it is an old building, upgrading its systems, there is a, a level of return or kickback uh that we will get from efficiency main, and one of the biggest things is they handle the paperwork. So they're familiar with the space, they understand it, that, that I think is important. Um, the other thing is, they, they understand Train actually makes the condensers that are already there. Uh, so there's a little bit of like institutional knowledge about what they are, how they will change, and they understand um also with the boiler that we have, we get domestic hot water at Cumston from a million BTU heater uh boiler, and that doesn't, that's no longer ideal. Um, so little things like that that we can do. Uh, there are also um, uh, included in this or implied, I could say, in this uh efficiency upgrades such as insulation, making sure, checking the building so that we don't add all of this capacity and just have it going out the windows, because you don't uh have enough uh insulation. So, um, felt really good with this. They, they, uh, do you guys have any questions before I blabber on? Um, then I will say, they, they, they use this program, so it doesn't necessarily, it's, it's already public. All of their prices are already public, which is why they use that Omnia. Um, so it's not, you know, if they bid, they gave us a cost thing, that's, that's what that, it is. It doesn't have to be an RFP, does that make sense? Because they, they're already, we already know what it costs. Um, as they, i- i- if we begin and, and sign with this and wanna do this, then we would be looking at a November or December twenty twenty-four, right around in there, um, install of the new system. And that's if uh the select board approves it, if we go ahead. A lot of things to like about this, uh, it's um, you know, i- it is a lease program, there's ways, the cost makes sense. Um, and it's not going to break the bank, it's not a bond, it's not that sort of thing. Um, it, it, it was a really nice proposal. Dustin, I'm sure could, could be smarter and tell you more about it, but I, that's kind of what I gleaned.
And Dennis, remind us, what do we have put aside?
A hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, we already have the money, you know, it, it's four, I think four thirty was the estimate on that base paper you have. So we already have a hundred thousand towards that. Um, if we could do, you know, the, the, the program and somehow, um, own that equipment and after a while, then everything we're saving is on us.
Justin, the interest stays at three percent?
Yes, it's estimated. If you the time that we lock in the contract, they will, but, but that was their best, best estimate on their, their program.
Which is amazing right now.
Yeah, it was a.
This Omnia thing that he's talking about, this is a national, uh, uh, nonprofit group that you're allowed to bid through and then they post the bid prices for publicly bid. Idea. So what they're using here, they're using a bid, uh, uh, one of the examples they use for the pricing we're using is the city of Milwaukee built out their city's HVAC program. So we have the list of what they charge per hour, per piece of equipment. It's all publicly listed. So then this company posts that. And it allows you as a public entity to show that this has been publicly bid. All the information is out there and you can use that as a as a bid. It's already been bid out publicly, so you can use that. If you're comfortable with it, um. It's a legitimate way to do it without having to then hire an engineer to spec all this out and then put out an RFP, which we have to do on our own expense and then have the bid on again. So that's just kind of a.
So, uh, so the proposal is to use the hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding that we set aside for replacement of condensers.
Yes, sir.
Um, as sort of a down payment.
Yeah, uh, think of it that way. I, I would, I would say that's a good, that's a good metaphor for it. It certainly, it, it, it gives us a number of options like, uh, basically we have the money for the first year of payments, right? Uh, something like that. So we, you know, some, if that's how we want to do it. So we, we have that money set aside. It is like a down payment.
And then the balance we would need to go to the voters for?
It would basically, because it's a, it's a lease, uh, uh, program. First, we would have to go to the voters to approve it because it's a fifteen year lease, so we can't. As select board, you can only approve things within one year. So anything multi-year, we have to commit the town to that. It wouldn't, it's basically an operating expense at that point, because we just have to fund the payments every year. So it's not like a bond, like we wouldn't have to borrow any money to do this. The, uh, where, where was I going with that? I had a thought. Go ahead. Did you have another question? Let, let, let me think again. I was trying to think.
Uh, three hundred thousand and
Yeah.
Change. Would be paid over the course of fifteen years in a, in a lease agreement that we would need to ask permission for the voters approval. Um, uh.
Every year or?
One time, just, just one time.
Yeah.
One time. And that would solve our problem with, uh, efficient um, utilities in Comston.
I, 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 you know, I'm always hesitant to say it with Saul, but it's gonna go, it's, it's, I believe that it's going to reduce the energy usage at Comston to such a degree that it will be pretty amazing. I think that's where.
Yeah.
That, one of the cost things that they get in there, I don't know if you see it, but we use eight thousand gallons of heating oil right now. One of the ideas that they had was the replacement of that boiler to reroute that domestic hot water. They could save us five thousand gallons a year. And at the price right now, that's twenty thousand dollars. So I, I, I have great faith in this being the next evolution of energy efficiency at Comston.
It includes, uh, building envelope improvements, so that'll, uh, fill any insulation areas around windows, any place they can find gaps. It includes them doing that work. There's almost sixty thousand in the project for just that, uh, kind of work. It completely replaces the automated system, so the system that he would use to control it, so it'll have a much better, uh, uh, control system. It adds heat pumps and energy recovery devices for certain areas. That'll allow him to really dial in which areas you actually want heat or cooling in, instead of having to heat up the whole theater when all you want to do is heat up the front. You know, the front area in the building.
Zones of the building.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And then it included the boiler.
Yeah.
Uh, which will basically be, uh, a wall mounted thing. It'll probably be about a tenth of the size of the thing that's in there now.
Amazing, because they just service the boiler and it's, it's gigantic. It's like, I, I don't know how many plates it is, but it is big. It's a big building.
Can we keep that running all year round just for hot water?
Correct, yeah.
Dennis, what source of fuel would this new unit use?
Uh, the, uh, the, the new boiler would still be, I think it would be a part of the system where we would have electricity doing the heating and cooling. So the good news is, uh, you know, we would have, uh, there would be, you know, we'd say, well, what about a backup? Right now, there's nothing like that either. There's no, if the power goes out at Comston, it's cold.
So the thing for you all to think about is the hundred thousand dollars we have. If you want to move forward, what it allows Train to do is they'll move forward with their engineering type work. They can do this so that we can meet this timeline if we want it for twenty twenty four. They would have to get started with having their engineering teams actually, uh, design this stuff so that then they can order the equipment. The risk is if you move forward, um, as is being proposed here, and then the town doesn't, doesn't support the initiative at town meeting, we would have to reimburse them for the engineering type work they're gonna do. So some of that hundred thousand, we would basically forfeit to the company for the work that they've already done to get the specs together so that they can bid out the equipment. The building envelope improvements, they would move forward with doing the analysis that they don't do that work. They have subcontract, oh, the insulation work, it's just not what they do. They're an HVAC vendor. So in order to meet that timeline and so that they can um, have everything ready to bid it out in time, so they could meet that twenty four timeline. Because like everything right now, some of this equipment has a nine, ten, twelve month lead time for them to get the equipment.
Yeah. And also with the, the schedule of the theater. So we have, uh, we have a, a window where we usually don't have, uh, users in. Otherwise, and, and they, they believe that they'll be able to work, uh, you know, three weeks, maybe a month. And trying to, to, to do the events around that is just going to be a little bit of a juggle. So November, December, usually the best.
Because the alternative would be wait another year.
Yeah, correct.
And, uh, the price is going to change.
Yeah, that, and that's part of it. And, and I think, like they said, you know, there's a lot of some of these units and, um, they understand that if we follow this timeline, they feel pretty confident that we would have it for.
Yeah.
It seems like a lot of the insulation was upgraded. I know there was like a three year stretch where they were there insulating certain areas year after year.
Yeah, the, the above the theater has been done. Um, so that's one of them. Um, there's been, uh, insulation in the back areas of the theater where they had a hole and they just like blew the stuff in. Um, and there's been some of that around as well. I think they want to find out exactly where we could improve.
Are they talking about like a thermal analysis?
I, I, I would say that's involved. I mean, the, the way they talked about like envelope, making sure that the heat's not, there's no heat loss or anything like that.
But I mean, they just didn't do that, you know, ten, twenty years ago where.
Okay. But one of the things that we, it is hard to figure out, uh, for the hall, you know, that we've talked about multiple times is the fact that with the stained glass windows, there's no great way to protect and insulate those windows, because you can't put anything behind them that heats up the lead, because then it affects the windows. So, you know, that's the touchy thing about that building is that
Yeah.
There's certain, only certain things, but you know, this, this, um.
Yeah, I, I, this is, this has been kind of a, a, a long get to get here. I thought we would be able to use, uh, different contractors. I thought we, we could do different, some in- information, but this is, this to me is the exact solution that I was kind of hoping would come along. More efficiency, helping cut back on some of the things that we already do. And we're gonna see savings this year once I crunch the numbers to be more detailed in our electricity, just from having LED lights.
Exactly.
So that's exciting.
What do you need from us tonight?
Um, I think we need to, uh, basically agree to move forward with this plan. Is that right, Justin?
Yeah, if you want to meet that timeline, then they want, um, some commitment. So like I said, we'd be putting some of that money on the line where to be that the town didn't, didn't support the initiative in June. We would have to pay them for some of their engineering work that they would send to their engineering teams. We would have to reimburse them for that if we didn't move forward. If we move forward, then it's just part of the project cost, but that I guess is the risk that we're asking you to see if it's okay for us to move forward with that, knowing that.
Do we have any idea what that number would be?
They didn't give us a number. I can't remember if they did or not.
It's not, I mean, it's not, uh, it's not all of it. I know that much. And I know that it was, it was, it was enough that we would have this conversation. But I, I can't tell you exactly.
Yeah, I'm thinking that they said somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five thousand would be on the outside range of what that might be.
It's, it's not a, it, it's, it's worth it. You know what I mean? It's, it's like, it's, you know, something.
But I think, yeah, I mean, for me, since we show the savings and do that, if people want to see what the savings will be, the addendum to the warrant is
Yeah.
Exactly, and be able to see the numbers, so, and, um.
So I'm willing to make a motion, uh, that we authorize the town manager to proceed with, uh, not more than thirty thousand dollars of expenditure to initiate this agreement.
I'll second that.
So, any further discussion, right? So Kent made a motion and Chris seconded it to, uh, town manager proceed with the, uh, not spending more than thirty thousand dollars for the, uh, HVAC and movement for Comston.
Just, just a point of clarification for the record. This is, uh, the source of this funding is ARPA funding. It's already been approved by the voters.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
And, uh, all those in favor of? Thank you.
And then to back up to number seven. I'll back up to number seven. I make a motion, we approve the lease agreement with the theater at Monmouth for the use of Comston Hall.
Second.
It was motion by Chris, second by Kent, to approve the lease agreement with uh, Theater Alamas for Comston Hall. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Next is to, uh, uh, consider changes by the planning board, to the planning board rules, regulations as recommended by the planning board.
The, uh, you want me to read the quote from Steve, what they're actually doing here? Um, like, Steve wrote to me, the significant changes are a change to the election of officers to August, the elimination of the elected, the elected secretary position and replacement with a recording secretary. And the addition of a section on reconsideration. Those are the changes. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, um, we assume these needed to come to you because they were approved last time. I'm not sure whether this board actually has to, but they were approved that way last time, so we're trying to do it. Be consistent. I think they could make their own rules, but we'll just keep doing it the way that it had been done for consistency's sake.
Now I make a motion that we, uh, approve the recommendations to the planning board rules and regulations.
I'll second that.
So it's a motion by Ken, a second by Chris, to, uh, approve the changes to the planning board rules and regulations. Uh, as regu- as recommended. All those in favor? Thank you.
Next, I brought the old ones to you in two thousand and five, because I wrote.
Okay, there you go.
That's why it got.
Yeah, okay.
Because I was new, I was, I was only here six months, so everything went, you know, we was, we, we had a uh, town manager switch right at the same point. Paul Bird came back, he said, no, it's ended.
Jason.
Jason left.
Yeah.
Paul came in, everything had to go to you. But that's how this started.
Yeah.
Next, to consider a letter to AARP acknowledging Monmouth, Monmouth's efforts to become a age-friendly community.
Anything I'd like me to read what Doug wrote? I think if, if you, if you want to hear it, I'm not sure if everybody read it or.
Yeah.
Um, on behalf of the town of Monmouth, I am pleased to submit this letter of interest and commitment to the AARP World Health Organization of Age-Friendly Communities. Monmouth recognizes the importance of encouraging and promoting age-friendly planning policies to address changing demographics and to enhance independent living. And is committed to a process of continual improvement to support active and healthy aging. As part of our involvement and commitment, Portis Leckman has created a committee that is assessing the community's age-friendliness and is in the process of forming an action plan based on the findings of that assessment. The committee is involving older residents in the planning process as it is, as it progresses towards the implementation of the action plan. Sincerely, Doug Ludwig, Chairman, Portis Leckman.
This will allow us to tap into some things that they'll print for us, for the committee and different things like that, so. But we have to make the formal, you know, direct, yeah, to send the letter and all of that. So it's been, it's been a good committee and some good things moving forward, some good ideas and stuff, so. I make a motion, we approve, um, the, a letter to the, to AARP acknowledging Monmouth's efforts to become an age-friendly community.
Second.
There was a motion by Chris, second by Kent, to approve the letter being sent to the AARP. All of those in favor?
Finally, not the assignment.
Uh, to consider approving the twenty twenty-three municipal valuation.
This is just an annual return. It has, it's like a tax return to the town. It has to be submitted to main revenue to get all the reimbursements for veterans, homestead, solar, stabilization money, all that. So this goes, it's all the information on the town's assessment. Um, our value in all the different categories and the programs that, or people are enrolled with. And you have to approve it because you serve as the board and Donna can't sign it.
I move we approve the return.
I'll second that.
So it's a motion by Joe, second by Chris, to approve the twenty twenty-three municipal valuation. There are all those in favor?
And next is Warren, number nine.
Blue Rock Earthworks, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Parking for the transfer station. BL Thircut Incorporated Fire Department Annual Inspection Breathing Air Test. NSK Burke Fuel for Public, oh, sorry, the other one was one thousand ninety dollars. NSK Burke Fuel, one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Diane's Signs and Service Transfer Station decals, one thousand six hundred and seventy-five. Vivian Oil Number Two, two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, various buildings. Name Equalization Consultants Testing Agent, two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Here's Autobody Shop Sales, two thousand sixteen Ford F- one fifty repairs, two thousand dollars. Data Main Bureau Motor Vehicles, fifteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. For a total of thirty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Make a motion, we approve Warren number nine, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four.
There are payments for those decals on the last one?
No.
There wasn't.
They placed the order.
I played that number before and I just didn't know if it was on the last.
I can double check that part.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by
Ken.
Ken, Ken, uh, second by Chris to approve, uh, Warren number twenty-eight, or, uh, nine. Uh, all those in favor? You. Then, we need an exact.
No, no.
Okay.
Before I, you've been saying about the panic position, but we haven't had a chance to meet the, the, uh, probably your next meeting.
And make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?